Regular board meeting of Tuesday, May 24, 2022. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We are very honoured today to have a pre-recorded video of grade two students from Mackenzie Lake School singing Oh Canada, but ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With flowing hearts we see the right, a true march strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee.
We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blackfoot Nations, which include the Sichica, the Pekani, and the Gaianna. We acknowledge the Sutena and Stony Nakota First Nations, the Métis Nation Region Three, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty Seven region of southern Alberta. I'd like to take an opportunity to welcome all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting. Representing our stakeholder groups, I would like to recognise Bob Cocking from the Alberta Teachers' Association Local 38, and Brady Thompson from the Principals' Association for Adolescent Learners. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minner, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, there are no agenda changes to be noted for today's meeting.
Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved as submitted? Justy Dennis, thank you. Those in favour of the motion? It's approved unanimously, carried unanimously, my apologies. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, Three-Year System Student Accommodation Plan 2022 to 2025. Chief UC, will you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, today we present the Three-Year System Student Accommodation Plan. This report summarises the projects and engagements completed during the current school year to prioritise, or pardon me, to prioritise student accommodation within CBE schools, lay out the decisions that will be required in the short term to address student accommodation pressures for the 2022-2023 school year, and finally identifies the student accommodation challenges that are anticipated for the following two school years. At this time, Madam Chair, I will invite Superintendent Breton to provide additional details on the report and to respond to questions from trustees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair and trustees, with some 30 new replacement and modernised projects completed over the past six school years, and another five new schools currently under construction, coupled with an ever-evolving city that new schools, coupled with the choices students and families make on an ongoing basis to best meet their learning needs. I would like to highlight the following two aspects of the report. First, Attachment Two captures the decisions made this past school year in regards to grade configurations and boundary designations for the four new schools anticipated to open during the 22-23 school year. And secondly, Attachment One identifies 21 student accommodation projects that the CBE is monitoring closely and that may require intervention to support student learning opportunities, this by maintaining a healthy student population in those schools, meaning not too full, not too empty, and that ultimately also helps contribute to the overall financial sustainability of the school. So in conclusion, the report before you helps summarise the ongoing work that is done to ensure that CBE schools continue to evolve, this to ensure that they can continue to provide learning environments that offer flexibility, access, and choice to students. And with that, we'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Just before trustees have any questions or comments on the report, we're going to take a quick recess, we'll return at 12:11.
...what the impact or possible impact of those challenges are, and then also what we are doing to alleviate them.
Through the chair. And so the challenge that has arisen is really one, as per what I was just mentioning, and it's where schools were sharing boundaries. And what is having to happen is now a firmer delineation as to what communities, what neighbourhoods are designated to which schools. So beyond that, I think it's really limited to that impact. For parents, of course, the impact they will see is reduced flexibility, something that they would have had in the past because of that ability for them to deal with the administration of both schools, and again, under the new system, that is reduced to a certain degree, and then the boundaries are firmed up, so it doesn't lend itself to that same flexibility that parents may have seen in the past.
I have a question in relation to, on page three of six, looking at the top of the page is a formula for weighted enrolment. My question is, can you give some examples and which ones qualify for severe complex needs in relation to that? And then, I guess a follow-up question is, are these teacher-identified needs, or is this a diagnosis?
So through the chair. I think it's really important just to specify about severe complex needs, what they are and how they factor in. So the weighting is important in this case for utilisation calculations in that these students have three times the weighting of a student without such a severe code. So within that, severe codes certainly range in their presentations, they could have intellectual disabilities, emotional, behavioural, medical, blind, deaf, and can involve their language. So with all of that, I think what's really important is to state that these wouldn't be teacher-initiated, that they would require the expertise of a professional to be able to help with, usually through a diagnosis, to result in them receiving a code. And that's often either a medical professional, or it could be a mental health professional such as a psychologist. So I think, you know, you raise a good question, which is wondering about equity and if there would be components where there might be children who are overlooked because they don't have means to have these codes identified. What I can assure you, though, is that severe codes are generally known, and so a lot of students come with these diagnoses made before even arriving within the CBE. Others have presentations that are severe and become sort of triage to the very top of the assessments that are done within the CBE. So I don't think this presents an equity issue in respect to, would there be students that have severe codes that are unknown and undiagnosed and unidentified? They would be. Where you might see these addressed is often in specialised programmes, and so the important element of that with respect to where these students are actually situated is that there is a requirement that we try to put these programmes across the system so there's equitable access geographically for all students regardless of where they live within the city. And so from that perspective, we try to find schools across the CBE to host these programmes in which do capture many of these, although not all, but many of these students. And then from that perspective, where we place these across the system is generally in schools that have lower utilisation rates, and so the schools probably with less students with severe codes would be those that actually don't have space for programmes. However, there would be some students with severe codes who are in inclusive programming across the system, and again, those students would be known and coded.
Thank you. Justy Close, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hock. The broader question that I have this morning, or this afternoon, is the plan that you produce annually is a result of the Board of Trustees' Operational Expectation Nine Facilities, and I'm just wondering if there are any other drivers or a strategy document for creating the Student Accommodation Plan other than the modular classroom programme and the Three-Year School Capital Plan? Thank you.
Through the chair. So the Three-Year System Student Accommodation Plan, the Modular Classroom Plan, the Three-Year School Capital Plan, these are all plans that seek to situate, make best suitable, and allow for students to access schools over the long term. And that longer-term picture is the 10-year Student Accommodations and Facilities Strategy. And so it will look at what projections are for enrolment across the city, where we see growth happening within the city, where it's informed, of course, by what we've seen in terms of growth in the city, what decisions parents are making. It can be, of course, it'll be informed by things like what the government is prioritising, and how that is playing itself out in terms of legislation that they're enacting, or what they are putting their money towards. And putting all of those factors together, looking again to best situate or position schools to serve students, to make sure that they're best suitable, and so I think again, modernisations, for example, or the need to be able to take off of modular classrooms, those kinds of things, those are realised through those different plans in support of ultimately attaining the strategy, again, focused on best delivering outcomes for students in the long term, making sure that the system is sustainable and so as to be able to support students in the best possible way.
Justy Dennis?
Thank you. So I understand that decisions around accommodation planning are extremely complex because we know that every decision can and likely will impact multiple school sites. And throughout the report, there are identified options or solutions to address over or under utilisation as, you know, possible boundary adjustments, changes to grade configurations, or the addition of system classes. I'm just wondering in what situations we might consider the expansion of alternative programmes as a possible solution, especially those programmes that are particularly popular with our families.
Through the chair. So alternative programme expansion is considered in areas where, of course, there's a high demand for a certain programme, but it's more than just that. We need to ensure that there's actual physical space within schools in that area, and also that there are students that we can draw from. And specifically here, what I'm thinking about is if a programme would end up depleting another CBE school because the catchment area in question already has very few students that have not already made a decision to choose a CBE school, if suddenly they're faced with an alternative programme that could suddenly just see the emptying of that other school, and then we've just shifted the problem from one school to another, if that is the case. An alternative programme would certainly be considered also if the proposed location is closer to where students live, and there is sufficient space. And what I'm referring there to the first part is in terms of being closer to where students live. Of course, all of our alternative programmes are already available to all students, but because of the nature of some of those programmes and their popularity, they might be a single campus in the entire city, meaning some very, very lengthy commute times for students who might be interested in a programme unless they're situated in proximity. So occasionally, we would be looking, and we can consider having an alternative programme within, and we see this regularly within CBE schools, an alternative programme situated within a regular program school. Generally, here, the aim is that we'd have enough space to offer at least two classes per grade for that grade configuration of the school. So if the programme in question is an elementary school, and then at that point in time, we'd probably be looking for two grades, two classes per grade through the K to six continuum, for example.
Justy Close?
I'm assuming that the Systems Student Accommodation Plan dashboard tool is new, and I was just wondering if we could further highlight how you anticipate that could be used and what information is on it.
Through the chair, you're quite correct. This is a tool that was rolled out only just very recently with the start of this new school year. Parents have had the benefit of the SSAP dashboard. Essentially, it's an interactive mapping tool, so it provides visual information in terms of schools that by going to those schools on the map, provides enrolment projections, information about school utilisation, and any potential connections, again, to the SSAP that might exist for that school. So if they're being tracked for balancing of enrolment, potentially being impacted by a new school opening, those kinds of things. Again, just trying to represent the information in a different way as opposed to just, you know, as we have it here, a little bit dry and just pages and pages of tables, and then having to look for your school name through all of that. Well, here, you can actually go to the tool, type in the school of interest to you, and boom, and you will see it situated on the map with all of the pertinent information for that specific school.
Justy Bolger?
Thank you. I noticed in some of the attachments that some schools, not COVID-19 and CBE, learn as possible factors to having low enrolment, and others do not, and I was just wondering about that. And do we have data on students attending online versus knowing what their physical school would be? And I guess we'd just be guessing where they might be potentially moving back to. Thanks.
Through the chair. So yes, schools with the note that you've just commented on were identified as those that were specifically still low in terms of enrolment, or correction, they were low in enrolment specifically due to COVID-19 after comparing both in-school and online registrations. And so that second part of the question is certainly, yes, we do have the ability and do cross-reference, so students are tracked annually as to whether they are currently in their designated school or whether they're online, and we have the ability to see where they would have been based on their address, where they would have been designated to had they chosen to attend in person instead of doing that online.
I have a question in relation to the large list, page four of six. To me, this seems like a lot of system initiatives and short-term projects compared to our completed projects. Do we regularly look at adjusting this many at once? And can you identify, other than COVID, in which you spoke to, any other large shifts that occurred this year to put so many on the list?
To the chair. So the number of short-term projects on the list for this next school year is influenced, most certainly, by the fact that these past two years, we had been committing a lot of effort, resources towards the largest engagement that we've held, a citywide engagement that impacted essentially all schools because ultimately it was about high schools, and needing to reach out to the citizens of Calgary and solicit input from thousands and thousands of students, parents, families. And having concluded that last year, and knowing that also, of course, as we were entering into this school year, there was an election coming up in October, and not wanting through the actions of administration to be influencing the potential outcome of that election, an intentional decision to ensure that we were placing the work that needs to be done to continue balancing student enrolment across the schools in a way that allows it to be able to continue to move. So what you see reflected in front of you, again, a reflection of a tremendous amount of effort that was drawn from high school engagement, and then an intentional desire to, notwithstanding the fact that, of course, we are and have had to over the course of this year, move some very important files to the board for your attention, looking to strategically position more of them outside of that initial window, that initial year that this school year provided because of the election.
Trusty Close?
On seven dash three, you reference the CBE planning principles, and I'm just wondering if the planning principles are actually highlighted in board policy or as a result of board policy and highlighted in administrative regulations or the 10-year strategic plan, or I'll try not to answer my own questions.
Through the chair. And so in this case, the planning principles are captured with an administrative regulation 1090, and are a reflection of input feedback that the CBE has received over many, many years from parents, and that have allowed us to condense those into those seven planning principles. Planning principles that, as is also recognised within the administrative regulation itself, sometimes can be at odds with each other depending on the circumstance. It's very rare where we can actually have an alignment, an engagement where all seven principles can be attained. It's often a compromise between principles, and then that's where engagement becomes so important with the community.
Trusty Close?
I can make this my last question, but it's around the seven dash four, seven dash five, around the open, limited, and closed enrolment lists, and I'm wondering if that's new. And I'm going to piggyback on that and ask a question unrelated to this report, but we'll see if I can ask this question, about the process for accepting students mid-year who are within the attendance area. So I've had parent inquiries about not being able to do that during mid-year because of enrolment, but it's typically someone that is from within that attendance boundary but also from out of district, so not a CBE student originally. But I'm just wondering if I could just, I'm trying to capture, we've got this open, limited, and closed enrolment list being new, and then what does that look like for future decisions and how that's made?
Through the chair. So the enrolment status in terms of open, limited, and closed, this is something that was implemented for the first time this school year, and was necessary, most certainly, to support the high school engagement that was undertaken. As far as in-year transfers, of course, recognising that schools are provided with resources at the start, during the year, as a result of that, of those initial resources that they're provided, the schools have to be very conscious of making sure that they're able to make those resources continue to be able to meet the learning needs of students throughout that calendar year. So they're not obligated to accept students mid-year. Acceptance is completely dependent upon the availability of space, once again, and resources to be able to support. and resources to be able to support that student. And so that's where you might be seeing those kinds of comments or hearing those kinds of comments from parents. Certainly, if there's circumstances that prevent them from enrolling at the very outset of the year, then it can be more complicated later on.
Trustees, are there any other questions or comments? Our next item of business is the annual monitoring of results five, character. Last week, trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding the report. The report is now on the agenda for the board to consider whether the chief superintendent is making reasonable progress with the provisions of results five, character. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational progress in the results area. The board has previously approved the reasonable interpretations of this results policy, which has set the stage for effective monitoring of actual organizational performance. I'd like to remind trustees that today, our job is to determine whether or not the report provides sufficient evidence that the CBE has made reasonable progress towards achieving this result and to build a portfolio of the chief superintendent's performance in the results half of the chief superintendent's job expectations. I would ask trustee to bring forward a motion regarding this report. Trustee Downey?
Pardon me. The motion is that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the monitoring report for results five, character, and concludes that reasonable progress is being made toward the ultimate achievement of this results policy.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees have reviewed the monitoring report for results five, character, and concludes that reasonable progress is being made toward the ultimate achievement of this results policy. Trustee Downey, would you please open debate?
Thank you, Chair Hock. The report card results and the summary measures for results five data indicates that overall levels of success are strong with an upward five-year trend. The percentage of students assessed with an indicator of exemplary strengths continue to increase, indicative of consistent or improved understanding on how to meet with success on the results five report card stems.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate?
Trustee Close?
Totally support that progress has been demonstrated through the report that we received. Thank you, trustee Downey, for bringing this forward. And I just have a comment to make that along with citizenship, this is my other favorite policy because I think it identifies values that are so aligned with the importance of public education and learning together. The only other comment I would love to make is that I'm so supportive of the increased work related to student voice in our school system. And in particular, given the results related to students feeling comfortable to challenge policies or procedures. I'm also grateful to see professional learning opportunities related to school leaders honoring student voice and learning assessment and decision-making and informing our school development plan goals. One of the things that just resonates with me, and I think we see this through student presentations and school presentations, that the more you feel like you belong, the easier it is for you to connect and ask those questions and be successful. So I really appreciated the progress that we received in this report, and I'll be voting in support.
Trustees for round one of debate? Move on to second round of debate? Any trustees wishing to enter or re-enter for second round? I'll take a moment to enter. I want to start off by saying I'm in full support of voting that our chief superintendent is making reasonable progress in relation to results five. Not only was last year a year of start, stop, with in-person learning, cohorting, and individual and family isolations due to the ongoing global pandemic, but we somehow turned it into one of the greatest teaching and learning outcomes in relation to character. For example, I know I mentioned this last time, but I think it bears repeating that under makes responsible decisions on the all-student category, I saw huge improvement in moving towards exemplary strength. It looks to be a direct result of decreasing emerging strength. So whatever we're doing is working. Everyone, from individual teachers to the system as a whole, is making progress to what I consider one of the most important lifelong skills of being able to make responsible decisions. I can tell by visiting schools in the last little while, this is evident in the student behavior and is reinforced positively by the teachers. This outcome is not just a mark on a page, but actual impact on how students conduct themselves. Proud moment, very proud moment for everyone. Thank you. Trustee Downey, will you please close debate?
I ask my colleagues to join me in support of this motion. The summary measures and report card data for R5 clearly show that students are successful in developing their character. The professional learning plans and structures in support that are outlined in this report will ensure that continued support is in place for CBE students in the coming school years.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is item 8.2, CBE Education Plan 2021-2024. Last week, trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding this report. The report is now on the agenda for the board's consideration. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Close?
Thank you, Chair Hock. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees, well, no, I'll read it this way. That the Board of Trustees approves the Education Plan 2021 to 2024 and authorizes its submission to Alberta Education.
Do trustees-
I do feel the need to say gold flames go out, just so you know.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the Education Plan 2021-2024 and authorizes its submission to the Alberta Education. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
With enthusiasm. Not only will I vote in support of approving and submitting the Education Plan to Alberta Education, I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Just to share, I've been asked what differences I've noticed from the time I was on the board 15 years ago till today. And often, my first answer usually includes, there's a lot that is the same. The values of students come first. Learning is our central purpose, and public education serves the common good are all values that previous boards that I served on actually created. And the focus on equity, excellence, and achievement that we're a policy board guiding decision-making and, of course, building a strong relationship with the chief superintendent are all things that I recognize and have remained the same. The other things that have remained the same is the risks related to our school buildings. That's still an ongoing conversation. But there is an emphasis that is different and one that I'm most excited about, and it's completely reflected in this education plan. We are a school system that supports every single one of our schools, and therefore, we support every single one of our students. And we serve students, families, and communities, and they are at the center of a very interconnected school system. Our collaboration is focused and thoughtful, and we're providing in-depth practical support based on robust and research-based practices. And equity is totally woven throughout our whole school system. I fully appreciate the work and assumptions embedded in the literacy, math, and Indigenous holistic frameworks. And as an aside, I love thinking and believing that every student can be successful in math. I'm fully confident that students are and will be engaged, inspired, and learned to their full potential. And for me, it's because we have an effective school system of schools that work with one another through the transitions from elementary to middle, junior high to high school. This education plan is directly tied to resources and our budget and will help us provide strong student outcomes and strong system success.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee Bulger?
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Close. I absolutely appreciate how this ed plan provides such an excellent and comprehensive overview of the CBE. A large board such as ours can be overwhelming at times, but this document does an excellent job of outlining what it is we do and how each part of the puzzle fits together, literally, on the front of the document to collaboratively support student success. In addition, the use of the school development plans, literacy, math, and wellbeing goals by each school and supported by their champions at every school also help to highlight what each school is doing in support of the specific needs of its student population. So thanks for this, and I support this education plan.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much. So I appreciate the comprehensive nature of the plan. The outcomes are clearly outlined and supported by the strategic use of local and provincial key measures. The details in the report and the answers to trustee questions last week give me great confidence that the system is leveraging all resources, people, and partners to maximize student success and to be very intentional about meeting students where they are at. Further evidence to that is the work staff have done to develop an impressive suite of frameworks that will serve as essential tools to equip educators in support of students now and into the future. I also appreciate the efforts being made to protect teaching and learning time through the careful consideration of moving some services centrally. Moving ahead, I will look forward to seeing how the key measures will be evaluated and adjusted over time as we continue to maximize every dollar spent and every action taken. This is a thoughtful and thorough plan laid out clearly and concisely, allowing for broad understanding for Calgarians and the families we serve. I'll be very pleased to support this motion today.
Trustee May?
I'm also happy to support this motion. The detail and depth of this plan just has every student in mind. The key measures demonstrate thoughtful planning, delivery, and reflection of education here at the CBE, and I'm really proud of the work done.
Trustees for first round of debate? We'll move to second round. Any trustees wishing to enter or re-enter for second round of debate? I will add my two cents here, although it has been thoroughly discussed and pointed out by my colleagues. We asked a lot of questions on this report last week, and CBE was able to showcase thorough, thoughtful, and intentional answers. This is what this document is. It's thorough, thoughtful, and intentional. Sets CBE up for success, and I'm incredibly grateful to the work that went into this document for what I can only assume was late nights and an immense amount of work done by a couple of individuals who culminated and designed what we see in front of us today. I can see by this plan a success story for each and every school and therefore, each and every student. I really look forward to the outcome of this work in our schools. Thank you. Trustee Close, will you please close?
Closed. Thank you.
I will now call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is item 8.3, Budget Report for the 2022-23. Last week, trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding this report. The report is now on the agenda for the board's consideration. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding the report? Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. That the Board of Trustees approves the 2022-23 budget as reflected in attachment one and authorizes its submission to Alberta Education.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the 2022-23 budget as reflected in attachment one and authorizes its submission to the Alberta Education. Trustee Dennis, will you please open debate?
Happy to do so. Thank you. This budget is responsive to the priorities of the Board of Trustees, academic achievement, equity, and wellbeing, and clearly supports the actions outlined in the education plan. I see a commitment to ensuring that our program is effective, efficient, and economical. In a world of flat funding and increasing costs, I also see a continued shift to align our services and supports within the funding that we receive. And with our commitment to meeting every student where they are at, to providing them with the best opportunities to graduate from high school and in support of their ongoing success, I am very pleased to see our continued investments in the unique pathways and dual-credit opportunities offered through all of our high schools in science, technology, engineering, math, and the trades. I appreciate that we are benefiting from bridge funding and COVID mitigation funding, but I also recognize the uncertainty surrounding that funding beyond this year as it does sit outside of the weighted moving average calculation, and it represents significant dollars to the CBE. These temporary grant dollars play a role in our funding being maintained at the same level as 2021-22. In a system with a considerable level of deferred maintenance and with aging infrastructure, I am concerned about the 37.6% decrease in our CMR funding. Yet I know that we will leverage those dollars as best we can. Support for young learners is essential to their success, and I know we will do our best to support our youngest learners, even with a $1.4 million reduction in funding for kindergarten students with severe and moderate language delays. This budget is thoughtful and strategic in its resource allocation as we consider base funding to schools and the deployment of funds through the index-based equity allocation and criteria-based response fund. This budget is innovative in responding to the needs of families through an enhancement of transportation services that allows families to select a second bus stop for their children. And as a public school system, we continue to offer a waiver process that sees no student designed, denied access to their public education because they cannot pay a fee. This budget demonstrates a commitment to the safety of our staff and students in our schools as we continue to employ MERV-13 filtration and by aligning with the recommendations from Alberta Health Services related to cleaning. And it supports the good stewardship of our resources that we consider how we can maintain optimum utilization rates in order to maximize operations and maintenance funding. It is also worthy to note that the CBE continues to spend less on system administration than our comparators, allowing us to push even more dollars out to the classroom. This budget is a demonstration of how the CBE is positioning itself for another year of supporting student success and maintaining ourselves as a high-achieving public school district committed to serving each and every student that comes through our doors.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee Close?
Thank you, Chair Hock. I will be entering the two rounds because I have timed, and I figured that I'm not going to make it. But it's only two minutes for each of the rounds, although I've given up time already. From a governance perspective, our role is to approve and submit a balanced budget to Alberta Education, and I think we can easily do that today. I want to express my support for the work CBE administration has done in carefully and diligently balancing student needs with our current realities. You have aligned funding with the education plan and our priorities of achievement, equity, student and staff wellbeing. And given that we are operating within reduced financial circumstances, you need to be commended that you have positioned the CBE to deliver strong student outcomes and strong system success. It is a budget based on equitable, effective, efficient, and economical lenses. It's also aligned with the funding we receive, but risks exist. And I think over this year, we have to be very attentive to these emerging risks. The budget document is transparent, easy to understand, and outlines these risks that exist due to additional unfunded costs associated potentially with provincial negotiations, community expectations for programming, supports and services, whether through a health or education lens, enrollment pressures and funding legs, costs in a growing system may increase faster than provincial funding provided, and of course, funding adjustments that might occur after the commencement of the school year. The role of school boards is to be accountable for results, stewardship of resources, and to have a strategic education plan. We are also accountable to CalGarians and we need to provide voice, influence, and advocacy within a relationship of trust, whether it's our provincial government or with the city of Calgary or with our community. One risk that I want to highlight in round two is about the money. Thank you Chair Hack.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Before we get to second round, I'm going to call a short recess. We'll return at one o'clock. Okay. I'm going to ask one more time, is there any trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? We will enter second round of debate. Trustees wishing to enter or re-enter? Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Hack. So second round of debate, I actually want to talk about the money and I know the money is the money. And when we ask for even more provincial dollars for public education, and I'm not suggesting that we ask for more dollars for provincially funded education as we have noticed that there is a difference, we're actually talking about reallocation of dollars, especially in a political environment when there's a strong interest to provide and we are grateful for this predictable, sustainable funding, but maybe not as grateful for reduced expenditures. So I worry specifically about the health and wellbeing of our students and staff and the expertise and the cost of coordination that's necessary to provide resources and programs so that we can reduce barriers to student success. It's important to have shared leadership when it comes to working together with community partners and students and their families, whether it's food, shelter, mental or physical health. And I know that there will be money to support wellbeing, mental health, and students experiencing academic challenges, but I don't think we know how or what. And collaboration costs, it's the right thing to do, but it costs time and money. I worry about how we can best increase opportunities for hands-on learning experiences through collegiate high schools, apprenticeship programs, and vocational education. This is an area that CBE has excelled at, dual credits as a way to improve high school completion rates, clear pathways into post-secondary education and career options. And then of course, the costs, both financial and perhaps through stress or physical of implementing a new curriculum within a short timeframe for both students and teachers. Choice, unlimited choice also costs money. Again, the money is the money. And all of these cost drivers have been identified in the ministry's business plan, but I'm unsure about how school boards are involved in all of these decisions. Local decision-making matters, local experience matters, and we need to find a way to continue to build the necessary trust and relationships so that CBE students can continue to have strong results. Thank you Chair Hack, and I'll be voting in support obviously of submitting a balanced budget to Alberta Education and trustee Dennis has highlighted exactly why we should be supporting it. Thank you.
Trustee Bulger?
Thank you. I too appreciate that this balances budget and that every available dollar has gone into classrooms. It's obvious to me that every effort's been made to support families, to maintain lunchroom and transportation and school fees with no increasing cost to families for the 22-23 school year and to maximize our resources, i.e. utilization rates throughout the board. I'm also pleased to know that we have the criteria-based response fund incorporated into the budget to address unique needs as they rise throughout the year.
I'll enter second round here. We can get into which document today is more important, but I want to echo my colleague's sentiments from last week's meeting that the education plan and the budget being presented together are stronger than they are apart. Thank you trustee Close and trustee Dennis for outlining some of the risks that we have going forward. I do want to discuss a little bit of admin success. We have a good team here that clearly works well together and build off each other's strengths. Based on what trustee Close mentioned at last week's meeting about how much information we received last week comparing it to past documents presented to the board, I am in awe of the information presented to us. I know that extra information in this report led to extra questions. More information tends to do just that. But I will say that as a trustee and keeping in mind my fiduciary duty, you have made my job easier. I can with full confidence support this budget because I know where the money is going and how it is being intentionally allocated to ensure success of students. Thank you. Trustee Dennis, would you like to close please?
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. That brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. There were no items pulled from consent. As such, all items will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. The board has one legal, one land, two labor, and three strategic planning matters to deal with in camera following the public portion of this meeting. That brings us to the conclusion of this portion of the agenda. I'd like to thank all of you who joined us at this meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 14, 2022.